Thank you. All right, I'd like to go ahead and call the Warranted Board of Aldermen meeting for Tuesday, June 20, 2017 in their order. If you would, please rise and say "Pledge Allegiance" with us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands: One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All.
Next item on the agenda will be the Consent Agenda items.
First item we have is the Work Session Minutes from June 6, 2017, the Regular Meeting Minutes from June 6, 2017, Executive Session Minutes from June 6, 2017, the Work Session and Executive Minutes from June 13, 2017, which was the Budget Meeting, Approval of Promotion of Tom Neldon to Assistant Public Works Director at $46,000 dollars a year, and Approval to Hire Kathleen Belts at $12 dollars an hour as a part-time records clerk in PD with a start date of June 19.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by John Miller, signed by Alderman Ock. Voca vote.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
And Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Hey, Mayor, can I ask one question real quick?
Sure.
Can you get Melody a little more volume for me?
I'll speak up.
Can you please speak up?
I can barely hear her.
Okay.
She'll try and speak up if that's okay.
Do I have to do it on this end?
Probably need to do it on your end, because she's speaking pretty loud. Good?
Try it now.
How's that?
It's better, thank you.
No, Melody, go ahead and say something.
I found it, okay.
You found it?
Did you hear her?
Say it again.
Did you find it?
Yeah, okay, there we go, you're good.
All right.
Next item on the agenda, I'll turn it over to interim chief Larry Eller.
I'd like to introduce our two newest police officers, Zachary Glatz and Tyler Sornowski.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, guys.
All right, next item on the agenda would be the Mayor's Appointment to Ward 1. After speaking with several individuals, I, there's one I came, came to agree on for my appointment, and I'd like to make, or I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Mayor's Appointment of Greg Costello to Ward 1 as new Alderman. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Schultz, voca vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
I would like to qualify my vote on this. I highly respect Mr. Costello, and I know that he is currently serving as Chairman of our TIF Commission, and with everything that's going on with the development at the interchange and the issues we're having with the Fire Board, Ambulance Board, and 9/11 Board, I would rather see him stay in that capacity, so that is why I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
I agree with what Mike Shel Harvey said, or do I need to repeat it?
Well, was it a yes or no?
That's a no.
Okay.
That's three in the yes, two in the no, and that is a...
Majority of the remaining Aldermen have approved. Have approved it.
All right. With that being said, that passes to a five to two vote. The next item will be the Office of Office. Can you please come forward, Mr. Costello?
Three to two.
Oh, I'm sorry, three to two with five person vote, sorry. Mayor, correction.
Hello. Raise your right hand and speak after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
For the position of Alderman.
The position of Alderman.
Of the city of Warrington.
Of the city of Warrington.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Missouri.
And of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws.
The provisions of all laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
Affecting this city.
Affecting this city.
And the Code of Ordinances.
And the Code of Ordinances.
Of the city of Warrington.
Of the city of Warrington.
And I will faithfully demean myself in office.
And I will faithfully demean myself in office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mayor, by the way, pass along my welcome aboard to Mr. Costello.
I will, I will, sir. I don't know if you heard what he said, congratulations.
I did, thank you.
I'll let him settle in for a minute, and then we'll move on to the next item.
Did I have just a moment?
Yes, by all means.
This is, I think, one of the few spots I haven't sat on in this time, since it was at the old part of City Hall before we moved it over here. I just want to quickly say that I am honored to be considered by Mayor's Luder. This is a very different role for me. Obviously didn't run for office. I am honored to finish out Karen Castaway's term. Karen was quite a go-getter, very independent, never had any doubt where she stood on position and what she had on her mind, so I will do my best to fill her position. I think this role as Alderman, I come to it without any agenda, any project that I want to get completed or anything like that. I plan on following the Mayor's lead. He is the one-at-a-time Mayor that was elected to this city, and I can tell you that I will support his projects and direction as long as they are legal and ethical, and I expect all of them to be that. I also want to say it's an honor to serve with Alderman Ock. I have no intentions of trying to catch up to his record of years served on the Board. He has had incredible dedication to this city, and we all owe people like him a debt of gratitude for the amount of commitment that he's had with this city. Alderman Miller, Gary Miller, and I worked together for a lot of years, and I can't tell you how much respect I have for him, and his ability is, his honesty and integrity is beyond reproach. I obviously know Alderman John Miller and plan on working hard to show respect for everyone on the Board and earn their respect. I think I know Alderman Schultz, least of any of the folks up here, but I've known him since he was about this tall, so he dates me and engages me, so. And also, I served many years with Alderman Shel Harvey. You have a very qualified Board, and I'm honored, honored to be here. Thank you.
Kind of a tough act to follow, but we'll take a time to hear from the public. Now, folks, if you need to come up and discuss an issue that's on the agenda, we ask you wait till we get to that time, and we'll watch you to time and talk. But if there's anything outside of what's on the agenda, please come forward and speak. We'll keep you at a five-minute maximum. You would come to the podium and state who you are, and then you can state whatever thing you need to speak about. Not saying any, we'll move on. Next will be Board of Aldermen comments.
Probably the thing we need to highlight to the public is something gets talked a lot, a lot, and that's shooting off of fireworks. And I think we've seen sufficient signs around town telling people what those times were and what should be expected, and I know Chief Powder Shell would say that we're going to stick strictly to what the sign says, that if you do it after the hours, we're not going to show leniency and tolerance to that, and I assume that's...
That's still correct.
So enjoy yourself, have fun on the fourth and during that time slot, and go crazy, I guess.
That still stands. If you guys didn't hear that, he said "it still stands." Zero tolerance, that is. Any other comments? Nope. I've got a couple comments that I need to bring up, but one, I'm going to go ahead and hit it right off the bat, which is, I don't know, did everybody receive the email from, I guess they were rescinding the...
Brandon.
No, from the toll road. I thought that was kind of a big issue. Did you guys get that?
No, I don't think that...
But I guess there was a, the head of VODOT was acknowledging the fact that they did not meet the vote that was needed by the set standard for the federal guidelines and the extension, and that he was recognizing that, sent the letter up to the federal level. So as of now, it sounds like the toll roads have been at least temporarily defeated. Alderman Shel Harvey, do you know anything about that, or do you have anything on comments on that?
Just that, as far as we know right now, the issue, like you said, there will be no toll road exclusively from Forest Hill to Independence, Missouri on Interstate 70. I missed the last meeting, so I haven't been brought up really to date on what they, what's going on with it, but I know the, down the road, they said it's going to be dependent upon what Trump, the federal government, and those people do with their infrastructure plan, but it looks like anything that comes down the pipeline through that will not be just an exclusive I-70, it would probably be tolling of all the interstates, I-44, 55, and 70, in the grand scheme of things, so that's, and that's probably a couple years down the road, if anything, if that happens, so.
Excellent. Thank you, I appreciate it. So moving on, I'd like to go ahead and reappoint, do the reappointment of Nancy Shel Harvey and Tany Mirth to, Tany Mirth to the Park Board for a three-year term, and appointment of Corey Tobias to the Park Board for a three-year term. I'll entertain a motion for approval, or if there's any comments.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Sorry, who's second there? Thank you, Gary. Motion was made by John Miller, Alderman John Miller, signed by Alderman Gary Miller. Voca vote, please.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Next on the agenda will be the Liquor License Renewals for 2017, 2018. Anybody like to comment or talk on that?
These are just the renewals.
What's that?
Just renewals. There's a Fall Fest on there, too.
Any questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion for the, the approval of Liquor License Renewals for 2017, 2018.
I make a motion that we renew those three licenses. I'll second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, signed by Alderman John Miller, voca vote.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Next item on the agenda will be the approval of Restaurant Bar Including Sunday Liquor License and Caterer License for Fall Festival for Deerfield Vineyards located at 227 East Boone Slick. Any questions? So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Costello, signed by Alderman Gary Miller, voca vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, I think the owner's here, can I ask how he's progressing, when we can, when we can go up and enjoy his business, and where we at that point?
Are you bringing samples?
My private.
His private stock.
I can say the doors look great on the building.
Obviously, I wanted to be open a while back, but things are moving quite along. Painter comes in tomorrow, and is going to start painting the outside, then he's going to move on to the inside. Drywall's all 98 percent done, muntaped. Basement is all drywall and ready to, for me to move in and start making line down there. It's moving along, but not fast enough for what I want, but it is what it is, so.
Do you have a revised timeframe?
Well, my wife tells me...
We won't hold you.
That's probably right.
I know. She tells me first of August, but I am bound determined I'm going to be open by July 15th. So, so...
Well, good luck.
After next week, I'm going to start laying the floor, and I'm going to be up there 18 hours a day getting the floor done and being ready.
As long as you get the vineyards planted, right?
Well, I've got 51 vines left to plant, and I'll have 900.
See, last time we talked, you were doing that almost all day, out there vineyard planting.
Yeah, I got 51 left, so, wow. So...
Excellent.
I'm going to plant probably 36 or so tomorrow morning before it gets to 90 degrees and then plant the rest of them, but...
Excellent.
And they're going to start the deck probably next week.
Great.
So, that deck will be a 36 by 36 deck.
I know the doors look awesome when you had them up there, you got them up there, so they look awesome. It's going to be nice.
That's the status.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda would be the approval for Aquatic Center Contract. Is there any questions or comments on what was given to you on the agenda?
Do we have Mr. Demean here, if anyone has questions?
We've gone over with staff...
If you could, come up to the podium, please. It's just easier for the people on, that we broadcast to, we can hear you.
We've gone over some changes with the staff on the contract, so I think everything's been worked through to their satisfaction, and we're anxious to be able to get started and get to work on the pool, so.
So, I mean, I read through that, I don't see it on my machine now, but I read through it earlier, so the party room that Alderman Shel Harvey suggested is included in, and it's something, it's not an option, it's included in the contract. And I know, John, you brought up some issues about HVAC.
Yeah, the ductless, if it meets in the budget, they can entertain business to keep it on, he's researched it.
Okay.
I'm following through and trying to get some ductless quotes, there's a couple of issues they're trying to work out, and as of now, we don't have a price on that one.
So if we approve, when we approve this tonight, is there a timeframe when you're going to start, I mean, obviously you started part of the process, but when, what should we expect to see next?
Well, the first thing is I'll sit down with the design team, and we'll, we'll get a schedule on when we can have information from them, and we can get to the contractors, and then we'll, we'll set up our schedule as to when we intend to break ground, but I would hope to break ground in the next two months, if possible.
So if there is something Alderman Ock worked out with the change to the ductless system, we would do that as a change?
Right, we'll just have various change orders as we go on, but the party room is really there.
Is included, yes.
It's included right now.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
I do, we look forward to working on the project. We have a lot of our employees live in this area, so they're anxious to...
A lot of these are closer to home.
Mr. Demean and I go back to when we were young then, and I believe your father Ralph was still alive, and I believe built the first City Hall. And, and I believe the courthouse, did you not?
Yeah.
Really?
They know that. So you got history.
Yeah, we've been here for a while.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to approve the Aquatic Center Contract in the amount of $5,404,026.
So moved. I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, signed by Alderman Schultz, voca vote, please.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item will be the discussion of closing of Pinky Road and Celia Lane.
Mayor, there's one point of clarification that we need to be sure that we made. When Melody was doing the research that was necessary to assist with getting the legal description together.
Yes.
It was discovered that what we had been calling Celia Lane legally is Pinky Road. Never was there any legal documentation to change that, so when you look at the ordinance later on this evening, it only talks about Pinky Road, but that's because that's the legal name for both sections that we're discussing.
Okay.
But for the purpose of the discussion, I'll still refer to...
Celia.
Celia, just so we have it, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Well, let me start the conversation. It is my intent to vote no on the ordinance tonight. I'm more than willing to vote yes on the ord, on the bill if it just closes Pinky south of where Cecilia is, and I'll explain my thinking on what this is. Probably one of the most difficult things we do, seeing the Council, is deal with growth and protecting property owners' rights, and sometimes that comes onto the form of eminent domain, and nobody likes to hear those words, and this is not what this is, but it has some flavor of that, and so if you say, well, it never happens in Warrington, I think Mike and certainly Greg will remember when Walmart came in with their superstore, they decided, said that one of the things they had to have in order to build was an alternative access to Highway 47, and unfortunately, there was a house that was sitting right where that access comes in that the city needed to acquire in order to fulfill the requirements of Walmart. And it was a very difficult situation because the owner, it wasn't the owner's residence, but it was the owner's home that she and her husband had purchased a number of years ago, and they were holding as investment property. City approached them and said, well, do you want to swap properties, do we want, you know, we tried to work with you, and I think finally, and maybe it was Greg negotiated something, when he was on council, negotiated a price where we eventually bought the home and we could put the road through. Now, again, this is not an eminent domain issue, but it also is an issue that impacts the quality of life of the individuals who live in that area. I mean, they purchased homes in that area, and the main access clearly is Cecilia Lane. We've had testimony on the part of people that in the wintertime, they go up to Pinky Road to get on Main Street, it's very elevated, it's very slick, and several people mentioned that they may be working at Holland over here, and that if the conditions are bad enough, they will literally walk from their house to get to work, and so I think that's a benefit of where they live, and really, it shouldn't be about, you know, do these people vote, it shouldn't be about, it shouldn't be about, does the suburb, or does subdivision ever grow? These people made a commitment, they're taxpayers, and from my perspective, to close Cecilia Lane, I think deprives them in some way of the enjoyment of their property that they currently have, and so from that perspective, I, I would be more than happy to support the close going south, but I cannot support the close of Cecilia Lane, because I think it deprives them of something they acquired when they, they moved in there, and certainly, the city wants to encourage development, city wants to work with the developer, and we have worked with the developer in the past, but in this case, I think I have to support a bill that does not close Cecilia Lane. So that's my thinking on the project.
Any other comments? We can hear from the public as well, just please, when you do, come forward and let's state who you are, and then you can take your business.
Thank you, Gary, I appreciate what you've done for me, spoke up this way. My name is John Hopkins, I live at 612 Cecilia Lane. I'm one of the residents on the road that you're trying to close off, and I just want to let you know that about three weeks ago, over at the SAF Holland Plant, there was a lowboy trailer that got stuck right there at Highway U and M, and when it got stuck, it was there for 30 minutes. There was no way that any of that traffic could go around on Double M there and down on the Boone Slick, because they're blocked off Highway U, M, and also Main Street up here, and when it did that, the only way that you could get around is by turning around, going down Pinky Road to Cecilia and coming up around Highway U. You had to actually drive around that semi that was stuck on the road, and right there at that corner, I do know that they've been trying to put a light up for a long time for the trucks trying to back in up there at that SAF Holland. They have turned around and changed that now to where you have to go down the side of Holland, turn your truck around, and you come in to get loaded, so they're trying to stop that congestion right there, but the thing is, is that I don't think that y'all need to shut off Cecilia Lane, that is a good access for us to get in and out of there. Whenever you turn around and have to try to drive up Pennaki Road there in the wintertime, it's real icy, and when people turn around and try to come down that road, you have a problem, because they can't control their vehicle whenever you're on that ice, and I really do appreciate y'all taking consideration and not closing down Cecilia on that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Brian Newsom, I live at 615 Cecilia Lane. Cecilia Lane's our main access in and out, straightest route. Kid, school bus come down there, drops kids off at four-way, makes a left on Pinkley, goes up Highway U, turn around Wolf Road. If you guys closed the access, though, we have to drop them off top the hill at Highway M and walk all the way down and around. You know, like, like John said, or Jay said, in the wintertime, you drive up the hill, you know, you got to stop at the stop sign, and if it's icy, you just can go straight back down. You know, you can't keep your momentum going, because running stop sign, you get in trouble, you know, you got all that brush on the left side, you can't see the traffic, you got to keep creeping up, you know. Closing Pinkley on the left side, you know, isn't right about me, but Cecilia Lane is our main in and out, straightest, so you can see the traffic both ways on Highway U, but, you know, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rhonda Hopkins, I work, I live, not work, well, I work there, too, but 612 Cecilia. I used to work at the license barrel when they put it up on the hill, when I would try to just make that little jog over to that other driveway at the license barrel, you can't, when you pull out, your car goes in the other lane, so the people coming up the hill, you have to wait for them, and you have to wait for the people coming from towards the graveyard. If you are too close over to the side, your back tires are going to go in that big ditch right there, and you got to pull way up, like Brian said, because the trees, you can't really see right there, so I think the safest way, we've been there 18 years, is straight through to you, you can see both ways just fine and get out just fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. I'm Raymond Welge, Millbrook Development Corporation. I'm Raymond Welge, Millbrook Development Corporation. We developed, or in the process over the years, the developing Millbrook subdivision. Address, you have my address, right? Okay. I just want to thank the Councilman for being considerate, and remarks from the two meetings ago, and taking action. And I did a lot of research on drainage and easements and all of that, which might be a moot point now, but I take it you are going to retain the easement down Pinkney. The sewer runs down there, the water line runs down there, and electric line runs down there, so I take it that's a, you don't have to say anything about that. I do have some ideas that I can present to my Councilman. I won't take up time here. I just want to thank you for your consideration, and I'm sure the residents thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Sean Fitzsimmons. I own the property at six oh six West Boonslick. It doesn't really touch Pinkney. I have some questions, as well as his comments. Haven't really had a lot of time to research this. When I look at this map, I know where I'm located. Pinkney runs north and south, and if you say Cecilia is also Pinkney, that runs east and west?
Yes.
Are we closing down all of Pinkney? And can someone show me which part of Pinkney will be closed down and affected if it's closed, proposed goes through?
Can we, yeah, can we pull it up on the screen?
Call me, Steve, yes.
Yeah, we're going to try to pull it up on the screen.
Okay.
I mean, basically, the proposal is to close down Cecilia and the part of Pinkney that has the old bridge on. So that would be.
So it would be south of Cecilia?
Correct.
So Highway U and Cecilia as well?
Right. So you could, you could leave the subdivision that's on Cecilia, but you'd be forced to make a left-hand turn and exit back onto Main Street or Double M?
You would have to make a left through up Pinkney, up the hill to MM or Boonslick?
Yes.
And you wouldn't be able to go straight anymore across?
No.
Is that right?
That's correct.
All right, I answered that question. My second.
So which property, I mean, are you the property that's immediately to the, I guess it'd be the west of Pinkney?
Actually, it won't be, it won't be touching our property. It doesn't even show our lot here. We're right off of Boonslick.
Okay.
Off MM at the corner of Pinkney and Boonslick. So my next question would be, it says that the owner of all the lots adjacent to Planted Street right away, as more particularly described below, which you have described very well, thank you, has requested the city abandon Pinkney Road, and the property returns to who? And for what purpose?
Well, my understanding would be the Pinkney Road that's south of Cecilia to the bridge, the city would abandon to allow the developer to have a connected lot to help his development effort. That's my understanding of what we're doing. Is that not correct? I don't believe there's any easements or any sewer lines that run south of where Cecilia ties in and heads south toward the bridge.
So the proposed.
If you can pull up the top of the ordinance, Melody Canyon, if you look, there's a statute that basically mandates, eighty-eight point six seven three mandates, if the city abandons roadway, right of way, or easement, it reverts to the, basically, the contiguous property owners. So it's a process set out by statute.
So in this case, the property owner's on the part being abandoned is the developer?
Right, on both sides.
On both sides.
Yeah, so if there was one house on one, if one house was on one side and another property on the other, like we did with Mr. Shill Harvey's property, when we abandoned that, it went, it went equal to whoever owns up, you know, basically.
The center of the road.
The center of the road, yeah.
Who is the, what is the future plan for that lot?
I don't know. I think.
Mr. Stevens is here.
He's here.
Well, and this all started as a sidewalk project.
The future plans is, number one, represent Keven Family Partnership, which is my family. I've been into developing for years. We have always wanted to clear the lot where it was, it was, could be used for a future commercial. Right now, we have no plans, but what we're trying to do is to keep the family partnership. And we want to level that whole lot from U and Double M all the way to.
So you want to absorb, that's yours. Would that be correct? Sure. Here's Boonslick, here's Highway U, there's Cecilia and Pinkney. I'm not going to do anything here, so I assume this is your.
Yeah, this is my property, and I've got other property, I got the land.
Well, sure, but you plan on absorbing that? And my thing is, until I know what the future plans are, why are we even bringing it up? Until there's some fruition of whatever is going to be done, we really can't vote yea or nay on how we feel about it.
To answer your question, it was a, it was a safety issue with the sidewalks, to connect the sidewalks into downtown.
I mean, the offer was from the developer, was if you would close these roads, then they would give us an easement?
Yes.
So that we could continue the sidewalk down Highway U.
From the nine one one dispatch center down.
It's already signed.
All the way around the corner.
So from my perspective, it's you're fixing safety on you, but you're creating a problem on Double M. And so it's not really fixed. And I would say to Mr. Keven, you know, we work together a lot on the interchange and stuff like that, and great respect for dealing your business, but in this case, I have to look at it from a different perspective.
Well, that answered a lot of my questions. I'm, I mean, I'm more concerned with future plans for the property and if it will negatively affect my property's value, whatever those future plans might be, before I'm willing to agree or commit to end.
How's the property equivalent zone today?
The majority of it, I believe, is commercial. That one little piece is industrial.
There we are.
Then it joins Highway U, that borders Highway U. It's already commercial?
Yes.
It's industrial.
Part of it is industrial. That'll be.
This is R two, this is M one, and this is C one. All the way over here, this whole thing is C one.
So we're going to.
Our subdivision, and this is R two, this is M one, industrial, and this is C one, commercial. I have the same concerns that you have, sir.
Right.
I mean, my other thought on this too, is if, if there's no plans currently, what's the point in closing the road? Because it may be that the plans were developed in such a way that there is an advantage to have a road there. We don't know, because we don't know what the plans will be. But to make the presumption that that road needs to be closed off for future development, and we don't know what it is, it may be beneficial that whoever comes in there may want a side access off of Highway U so they could pull vehicles in or out and won't have to deal with the Highway U traffic. So I think that would be another argument to say, you know, let's.
Which might affect the adjoining property owners' value.
Yeah, it may, it may provide value. You don't, we don't know that.
It might, or it might not. I would, I would vote no until I find out what the future plans are. Not as far as the sidewalk goes, not necessarily opposed to a sidewalk.
Nobody is.
But I, I would have to say no until I have more information on what future plans are for the surrounding property that will affect. And that's all I've got.
Thanks, Sean. Thank you.
Any more opposition, nothing else? I mean, I as an owner, may I?
Come on up, yes.
My name is Gene Keven. I represent Keven Family Partnership. And the general want to know what the purpose, what I'm going to do for the, with the ground. We've been into developing for years. Our purpose is, number one, I know the city wants to expand, the old town wants to expand. We're trying to help out. Originally, we bought the county highway department. They had junk all over and quit it. That's been exposed. I bought that and had that cleared off. The purpose is to take and level that whole corner, Highway U and, I wish I had Highway U and Double M, we're joined here. We want to level that all. You see all the trees and weeds up there. We want to level the whole thing, including the one on Pinkney and Double M. Now, Double M, you know, to me, what our intent to do is take there, widen it. There's some trees on the right-hand side that block the view, and we want to clean it up and make it nice, clean the whole lot. We've got approximately, I don't know, eight acres, seven, eight acres to put something together to make a deal. We don't have an immediate user, but what we want to do is satisfy every, try to satisfy, I mean, I don't know how many subdivisions that have access to two streets to go into a subdivision. I mean, I think, I think after this is all leveled off, and I think it'll open up and help the people in the back too. I mean, it's, I see no purpose of, but I mean, that's a purpose, that's what we want to do.
So would you be.
And as far as zoning, I mean, you know, I've been in, I mean, for years, I don't know what it zones, and, but I know that, you know, it's, it's an advantage to have a lot clear for any prospective buyers or commercial. If you got it all clear, you got your sewers and water there, and you got a planned development.
So Mr. Keven.
No, we don't, because right now, nothing's growing, but we want to grow and, you want to grow and, you know, got one street there, we're trying to help out the residents in the back, clean it up.
So Mr. Keven, would you be opposed to the sidewalk being developed now? And as I understood the conversation, is the city was going to build the sidewalk?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah, we had budgeted thirteen thousand, I believe, to put a sidewalk in on Highway U if this process would work.
So would you be opposed to the sidewalk going in now, getting that taken care of, and waiting on the proposal at hand until you have a viable project? And I understand property owners, you know, basically, what we're saying is distrust us, it'll all be fine. But I understand as a property owner that they would want to know what the future plans for this. And I've known you for a very long time, Gene, and I don't doubt that you have good intentions for everything you want to do here.
Yeah.
But I also understand that a property owner, an unknown, is kind of hard to deal with.
It's obvious, you know, that location is suitable for commercial or industrial. I can't see anybody going to build a home on there. That's my opinion, but that's, that's what.
I'm not sure, I heard any opposition, though, to building commercial. I think what I've heard the property owners say is, they don't know what you're going to do, and I'm not sure you do, other than that it might be some commercial, but you've also got zoning hurdles to go through in terms of, I heard, industrial, residential, and commercial zones that have to be.
That's a chance we have to take as a developer. We have to go before to get it, get it zoned. If they turn us down, hey, we've, at least we're trying to help the city, go along with the city, level it, and expose it to some developers.
So my question to you is, would, do you find it something that you would oppose to go ahead and let the city get the sidewalk built and in, which would take care of a safety hazard, and then come back with, with your master plan or proposal whenever you're ready to go?
Well, there again, you've got to reverse it. Here, what we want to do, I would not be opposed to putting the sidewalks in, no. I would oppose to leave it like it is for maybe six months or a year, but here, if we're going to expose it to buyers, I want to clean the lot up. I want to level the whole thing, and that's what buyers want to see.
But, but, but do you need to have the road closed to level that lot, sir? Do you need to have the road closed to level that lot?
Oh, yes, you got to combine it all.
But why do you, what happens if you get, a developer comes in and says, I want this project north of Cecilia, and I want this project south, and the road has benefit to them? We don't know that either.
Well, first of all, I'm at a disadvantage, and it's my, my problem, I have a bad hearing problem. I didn't hear all the comments made by the opposition, but I mean, that's, that's no fault. But one-on-one, I have a system. I'm getting up our needs, you know? But no, I, as far as, I could say, if I'm going to, if we're going to develop the thing, I want to clean it all up. We have to send men out there, they have, they have an ordinance against cutting the grass, we got trees up there, cities, you know, the city's got to work that whole area alongside with us there and keep it clean. I mean, you know, but I think personally that when we're done, and with the improvements on Double M coming in there, they got, they got a nice road going in there.
I guess my only comment on that, and I've driven Pinkney Road to going to Double M a number of times since this issue's come up, and I, there's no way you can improve the interchange to make it less steep. I mean, it's, you're going from the bottom to the top, and there's just no way that can be changed. Sure, you can widen it, widen it, and it needs to be widened, because the homeowner on the west has all these trees. It's, it's extremely difficult now, currently, trying to see what's coming down the road. But if you don't own that property, and if you don't buy it, then you can't, the property owner can't be forced to cut down those trees. So I, you can widen, you can do a lot of stuff, but it's still, you can't get rid of the elevation, is my point. The elevation's there.
Alderman Costello, to answer, I think, part of your question about putting in sidewalks now, because of the elevations of those lots, it would be impossible without building huge retaining walls to put the sidewalks in as they lay today.
So you'd level the pointed lot?
But you're talking about sidewalks, I mean, not here on M. They're coming up.
Right. I think you're saying that this lot at the point is, and I recall that being.
All of that along there, along Highway U, there's a pretty steep embankment when you get down close to where the nine one one lot stops.
Yeah.
And I'm not opposed at all to leveling the lots, if that's what needs to happen. I just think you could level the lots and maintain the road. And then when the future development comes in, then we can revisit the issue. That's my.
And for clarification, you're talking about the road we're labeling as Cecilia?
Yeah, right.
Not so much Pinkney?
No, Pinkney, I have no problem with south at all.
Mr. Keven, on, Gene, Mr. Keven, this, on Pinkney Road, the lower half of Pinkney Road.
I want to come up first.
Okay, yeah, I'll show you on. Okay.
Right.
The lower half of Pinkney, okay? This is Highway U.
Well, here, I have a map.
Okay, here, here, give me that.
That the gen, engineer, engineered all this out for the city and also for me. But this is at large, I see. I don't know if you want to show it on the board or something like that.
It's over there in it. Sorry. Can you, can you see it?
That behind there.
Then I can understand.
Okay.
We're getting John with the PowerPoint. You're going to.
Oh, don't shoot that. See this, the lower half here?
Oh, you got it.
Okay. Okay. This, the lower half of Pinkney. This is Highway U, comes up, this is that big hill that you're talking about.
Yeah.
Of taking this dirt and level on this property.
Right.
If, if we close this section of Pinkney and lock this hole, Bruce and Cecilia.
It's Highway U.
Highway U, this is Highway U. This is Highway U. This is Bozlek or MM. This is Highway U again here. Okay? If we close this section of the road, where you can take this dirt and bring it on down and clean this corner up. I agree, this corner, this corner is terrible. It's maintenance, a lot of things for you, a lot of things for the city, and it's going to be impossible to put a sidewalk in if this, actually, this dirt isn't. So to try to piece both, I can understand these folks about, you know, being unknown, it's hard to make a decision, and this area will be unknown. My question to you is, if this road here was closed, and we left this alone for later, after you decided what you were going to do, would this give you enough room to take this dirt and move it down this area? Now, remember, this road's closed.
That, that subdivision, I don't know if you see it. Hang on. Only Paul Pickney Road was always ceilinged before.
Yeah, this is-
Right. That's ceilinged.
This is ceilinged all the way through.
Well, you know, I own and all of the strong back there.
Yeah, no-
I wanted to do perfect, but closer than all of ours, I mean, all of us.
How this all came about, we had some discussion about putting the sidewalk in.
Yeah, right.
Okay. In this hill, we need a 911 to go over this area. This hill is, is, needs to be maintained. All this dirt needs to come down. What you were going to do is clean this lot, bring this dirt down into this area. We wanted to originally combine these two pieces of property, and that's how this proposal started. Close this section of the road, close this section of the road. Now, the argument that these, the residents brought up is a valid argument. They want to have this straight through here. And my question to you is, if we disclosed from here to here, would these folks would be fine with that by, I mean, I don't want to assume that, by, by, by the comments that you all made?
Sir?
You would be fine? Yes.
What he's talking about, he wants to take this dirt up here and bring down here. There's a creek here. There's no way he can slide all of that hill along you across that creek. He wants to take this and level it. That's why he wants his road closed.
But you could do that without closing the road, is not-
Sure, sure. Sure. Scrapers do it all the time. My concern about if you close Sicily, how am I going to get a dozer or any, or weed? Okay.
Millbrook get a dozer back in there to-
Back, back to the point, though, that is, if this section of the road was closed from here to here.
I, I'm not really wishing, I'm a little bit concerned. I, you know, I have to go. Anything I can work on, I'll just be a position happy man.
Oh, you've been great to work with. That's why, you've been wonderful to work with.
Yeah, so I'm willing to work with, but I mean, you know, here in the city, I read the paper, and they ask, you know, they want to develop over an old town. How are you going to develop them when you see that? That's my-
Well, I'm clear.
And it's, and it's going to be a bill later on in the agenda where we can vote on it.
When we get to that part of the agenda, and we vote on the bill, assuming the bill fails, I'd like to have an opportunity-
Who else?
He says he wants to merge them all? How can he do that when they're all different? What you calling it?
Zoning.
Zoning. How can he do that? Don't he got to get, you guys still-
Well, he said that. He said it earlier.
Yeah, that's a separate issue, though.
Building a planning agenda process.
Right, but you keep saying merge them all, but they're all different.
Well, eventually it'd have to be go through zoning. If it was, if it was separate, three separate pieces like it is now, he wanted to change, he'd have to go through zoning. If it was a piece, he'd still have to go through zoning. So that really doesn't change anything. And as I was saying, we'll get to the motion, if the bill passes, it passes. If it doesn't, I'd like to have an opportunity to put another motion on the floor to amend the bill to include only the south part of Pickney. So we'll see that. If that's, can we do that in the-
I think, no, we'd have to actually rewrite the bill.
Well, I will, we'd instruct, the motion would be to instruct the attorney to rewrite the bill.
Yeah, yes, yeah, that's fine.
If, if it doesn't pass.
The title is broad enough to cover an amendment to the legislative script.
Give me one minute. Go ahead, Alderman, sorry.
Can you explain, I didn't quite catch everything that Gary Alderman Ock said on that last, what was he talking about? A change?
Sure. It's a bill, it's, it's on a bill later on in the agenda.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
So if it gets voted yes, then it gets voted yes. If it gets voted no, then Alderman Ock would like to make a motion to have the attorney rewrite it or relook into it for just including the south end of Pickney Road.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thanks for clarification.
All right, folks, I don't mean to cut this off. We've spent a little over 30 minutes on this. It will be a building ordinance, so we'll see where it goes from there. But we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. All right. Next item on the agenda, we'll be hearing from Director of Operations and Finance Officer Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is a request for approval of a supplemental agreement with Crawford, Murphy, Tilly, who is the engineering firm on the interchange project. The request is to increase that contract amount by $79,220 related to the amount of time that was spent with coordination on right-of-ways and the original negotiations to get all those right-of-way documents and plans redrawn. It also includes time spent for them to complete a cost-share application. MoDOT has brought back the cost-share program, although it's very minute at this point compared to what it used to be. Our intention is to apply for cost-share in an amount that is approximately equal to what the construction engineering would be, that we would be paying MoDOT on the interchange project. It's just less than $800,000. So this allows them to prepare those documents. It would bring the upper limit of the agreement to $1,455,141 and 34 cents.
So in essence, what we're doing here, as we talked about in a budget meeting, if I get it right, is that we're going to incur an additional cost here, but because we're going to apply for the sharing, in essence, the money will come back. Is that what I'm saying?
Well, a portion, if we get the cost-share, a portion of, and it wouldn't necessarily be this money, but we would get some of the funds back.
Some money maybe, yeah.
But probably the bigger portion of why this contract needs to increase is because the volume of time that was spent working with the right-of-way and trying to get all of those issues resolved. They attended a good number of meetings and redrew plans many times on the north side. So they used many more hours than what was originally anticipated to get that done.
So you have a motion to-
Just-
Okay, I don't think a motion that we would agree to the supplemental agreement with the consultants on the interchange.
It's any amount of $79,220, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'll second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman John Miller, to approve the supplemental agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly in the amount of $79,220. Roll call vote.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ca- Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie Six Zero. You may be known as Alderman.
I know. My next item for you is a code change that relates to chickens. Back when we passed the chicken organs, we failed to include chickens in the same way that we do dogs and cats. And when we had chickens running at large, our animal control folks realized that we don't have any code related to how they're supposed to manage those chickens. So by adding-
They'll be on a leash, or what?
Well, they didn't really know what to do with them. So I think actually one of our animal control officers took them home and put them in a pen that she had, because we didn't even have a pen to put them in. So by changing the code, we're adding them to the definition of animals, which then allows us to impound them, be able to then later on adopt them out if there's no owners found, basically the same way that we handle cats and dogs.
Just to be, just to be clear, Terry, when we adopted the, after several discussions about the chickens, they had to be fenced in and in a pen, so we're, if they get out of that, that's, that's, that's the question.
That's what happened. They're running at large.
If they would get out of that, okay.
Yes.
We would treat it like cats and dogs.
Yes.
Is it like police calls when the chickens are at large, or is that?
I honestly can't say how we got the call.
Oh, okay.
Whether they just found, I'm sure someone called that there were chickens at large.
Chickens at large.
Seeing as how I wasn't on the board and when that situation was put into motion, how many chicken owners in the city do we have?
I actually know that.
Good.
There were four permits issued for chickens at four different addresses.
Okay.
I can't tell you how many they have, but there are four locations.
Okay.
Their license.
Their license. Okay.
Mayor, if I could make a comment on that?
By all means.
My neighbor, Steve Kohler, has chickens, and I wasn't even aware of it. There's no problem with noise, smell, or anything over there. So if they're taken care of right, I think, you know, I think it's, it works. So I compliment my neighbor on that, and he's obviously doing it right, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
If you would just come around to the podium, please.
Thanks, Mayor.
No problem.
My name's Sean Patson. My only question on the change, is that only in the city limits?
Yes.
Does change in ordinance only in the city limits? That's the only thing that matters.
We can't do anything without an account. It's only within the city.
All parts.
Any questions or comments? We don't need a motion to-
No, there's an ordinance later.
You got it.
And then the next item is an MOU with St. Charles County Police Cyber Crime Task Force, and Attorney Brubel is going to explain this.
I just want to do one clarification. Good evening, Mayor and Board. Jeff Hance actually had a different idea for the chickens than impounding them. He was pretty adamant that there's a different way to deal with them. Anyway, so the memorandum of understanding from St. Charles County is related to their Cyber Crime Task Force. We've been involved with them, have had an informal relationship with them over a period of years. We've had access to the capabilities they have to look at internet, computer-related crimes and whatnot. As you guys know, we separately have an agreement where we detach an officer and we get reimbursed for a grant to the Cyber Crime Task Force. St. Charles County is currently going through formalization of the Kalia certification process, which is the accreditation process, and they have to formalize all of their agreements. So this is just the formalization of what has been an informal agreement over the last several years. And I'm recommending approval of it.
So did everybody understand that?
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the St. Charles County Police Cyber Task Force.
Come on over.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Costello. Seconded by Alderman Gary Miller. Roll call vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie Six Zero.
That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Thank you, Terry. Next, we'll hear from Finance Manager Gabriel Poyet.
Good evening. The first item I have is just information on the proposed amendments. There is an ordinance, so you will vote on that later. So the items on here, we have revenue. We're including the loan proceeds from the MTFC, and that is related to the interchange. And then also the economic development sales tax and capital improvement sales tax. Those were the sales taxes that were approved or that were effective in January. So whenever we put the budget in place, we did not have the amounts for those, and also the capital related to the interchange, which is mostly engineering.
Do we anticipate revising the budget as the year ends again, or should this be the final revision?
This is the last one for the fiscal year.
Make a motion that we-
We have a, we have a ordinance later.
No, we'll make that motion.
Any questions or comments?
Not all that.
Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
All right. The next item is just information on the budget. There is, the budget file is in Dropbox. So on the revenue side, the total projected revenues for all funds is $29,600,000, which includes the loan proceeds of $13.5 million that will fund the West I-70 interchange project, and then also the new indoor-outdoor aquatic center, which is $5.7 million. On the water and sewer side, the projected revenues are $3.89 million. Of that, 3.1 is projected for the water and sewer consumption, which includes a 4% increase, which we talked about at an earlier board meeting. Sales tax is projected at $4.3 million, including 1.7, 1.57 million generated by the new sales taxes that we just discussed, that are specifically used to pay for the debt on the new I-70 interchange. And the other sales taxes were budgeted to increase 3% based on the current year actuals. On the expense, the operating expenses for the general fund are projected at $4.8 million, which does not include capital or debt service. On the water and sewer side, the operating expenses are budgeted at $1.462 million. Payroll included, quote, the performance-based and merit increases, which equal 3%. And we also added new positions in the budget for a building technician, and then also an assistant public works director, which is not included in that 3% increase. For capital expenditures, the new budget projected an amount of $27.68 million, which you have several exciting projects included in this budget. We have the remaining construction engineering for the East Interceptor Water, I'm sorry, wastewater system, which is $2.175 million. And then the West Interceptor wastewater system and the West I-70 interchange sewer extension, which total $3 million. And those are the projects that are going to be funded from the bond proceeds. So once these are all done, then we will have utilized the balance from that. The West I-70 interchange construction engineering is budgeted at $13.5 million, which will be funded through the MTFC loan proceeds. And that interchange is expected to open at the end of 2018, and we've already been contacted by commercial developers as a result of that. So excited to see businesses in the mall area. Also, the construction of the indoor-outdoor aquatic center that is going to be located off of Highway 47 at Warrior Road. That's going to be our newest city park. That's going to total $6.18 million. And the amenities included there would be the indoor-outdoor pool, also a dog park, frisbee golf, and walking trails. And that project would be financed from loan proceeds, with the remainder being funded through capital sales tax and the general fund. And we will be sending out information to residents regarding the bond financing in the upcoming months for that. For debt service, the total budget proposal is $2.7 million, which is the principal and interest. It includes $990,000 for the West I-70 interchange project, and then $588,000 for the ongoing wastewater system project that we just discussed. Are there any questions?
That's a lot. You got a lot going on yet.
Yeah, that's projects.
Yeah, I think we'd all be remiss if we didn't recognize your efforts and Terry's and all your department heads' work on the budget, because it's probably not your favorite thing to do in the course of a year, but certainly necessary. And I appreciate that, that work and that toward this budget. Probably the largest we've ever had.
Yeah.
Safe to say, by far.
I agree. I think this is probably one of the bigger, bigger budgets to probably develop.
All right. The last thing I have is the July 5th accounts payable listing. So since we're not having the meeting on the 4th, we still need to approve the accounts payable, since those need to be mailed out by the 10th of the month. So Melody will be emailing that to everyone on July 5th, which would like you to email her approval back-
her approval back on that date, so we can get those out. So July 5th, be looking for an email from Melody.
Any questions on that?
No.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we'll hear from our Public Works Director, Guy Jivers.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I have two items. The first item is my monthly report. A lot of progress, we're just kind of cleaning up some dirtwork and call or repair. We had four store blockages. Two were private and two were in the city. Any questions?
Any questions or comments, Guy?
Next item I have is an agreement, license for entry upon land and application for biosolids. This has given us the opportunity to haul sludge on Dr. Kat Myra's field, which is hooked up to Willow Road, which keeps our equipment off the main highway, and it costs us $4,500 a year. And part of that agreement is we mow his field in October one time, and then we apply to sludge and then make sure we meet all DNR's requirements.
Any questions or comments on that? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the license agreement for entry upon the land and application of biosolids in the amount of $4,500. So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller. Seconded by Alderman Schultz. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Guy. Next, we'll hear from Room Chief and Lieutenant Larry Iller.
Good evening, Board. The only item I have for you is the monthly report.
The total you've got for calls by 12-hour shifts, January through May, are those always typically that close, the numbers? It seems like they're within 150 calls of each other. Is that typical for Warrenton?
If you look down at 2016 also, you see that pattern repeats.
And just so-
It was a little lighter.
For some aldermen that may not have been here in the past, we did have a system, a system upgrade or changed systems, so reporting is different. So sometimes a numbers variation between last year and this year is due to the way the system that we use at the police department reports.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Next, we'll hear from Zoning Officer and Building Commissioner Jack Han.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item I have is my Building Department Code Enforcement Monthly Report. And as typical in May, weeds is the number-one violation. Do you have any other specific questions or comments?
Yeah, I do, I mean, I was going to ask about, you know, I've gone up to the new park several times, the one behind, I can't remember what I wrote, it's the new subdivision. I guess it's called Burning Subdivision. What is the developer doing along there? It looks like he's putting interstructure in, preparation for houses, or is it that?
I believe Guy might have been-
Okay, I was just kind of curious. Am I-
He's running the, he was running the power lines and that and getting ready to start, basically building, he needs to run the water lines and find his sewer lines and laterals.
I just always assumed that was done by-
Yeah, he's just trying, he's just getting everything laid out, ready to go.
Okay, just curious.
Any other questions or comments for Jack? I have one question. How many permits for new homes do we have year-to-date?
For new residential, we are at six.
Six from January through May?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's on the second page of my report.
Okay.
Next item I have is a subdivision record plat approval request, S U B D-59. It's a subdivision record plat approval for the Highway 47 Dollar General Edition to be located at 513 North Highway 47. Property is zoned RC-1, planned business district. Motion for approval passed six to zero with four absent at the June the 1st, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, with no additional conditions.
All right. Okay. Thanks. Bye.
I believe we lost connection to the control. Any other questions? No?
Next item is a subdivision record plat approval request, S U B 60. So subdivision record plat approval for the re-subdivision of Lot 1 of Narfield Place to be located at 505 and 507 Ingram. Property is Zone C-2, general commercial. Motion for approval passed six to zero with four absent at the June 1st, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting, with the condition that the applicant dedicate an easement along Highway 47 for the installation of a sidewalk. Install a sidewalk along Highway 47 or pay the required amount for the installation of the sidewalk into the city sidewalk fund.
Questions for that?
And I believe these, S U B D-61 has been removed by the request of the-
Earlier today, the applicant requested that it be tabled until the July meeting.
Correct. So that one will be removed from the agenda by the applicant's request.
Any other questions or comments? And folks, like you said earlier, several of those will be on the bill on, or bills on, later on the agenda. All right, next we'll hear from Maintenance and Grounds Director Brad Bizicrus.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First on, I have my monthly report for May. Any questions?
Lots of mowing hours.
Give us one second.
Lots of mowing hours.
Yes, yes, there is lots of mowing hours. If there are no other questions, we'll go on to the next. This is my rock and grading bid for the Athletic Complex parking lot out at the complex. Estimated amount was $5,000, budgeted amount was $5,000.
Got to get ready for all the tournaments, right?
Yep.
Do we do both? Are you doing both those lots?
All three lots.
All three lots?
Yeah. All three of them. They have never been touched since we built them, so some of them are nine, a little over nine years old. So, and this time do a little, between all the kids doing donuts and stuff, they got them messed up pretty good, so we're going to go in and regrade them, rock them where we can, and then stripe them again, so get that done.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the rock and grading project to the AC parking lots at Jasperine Lane in the amount of $5,000.
So moved.
One second. Motion made by Alderman Schultz, signed by Alderman Gary Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey is now absent.
Motion carries five zero with one absent.
Next is my, the pole, light poles at Dire Park. What this is, replacing the three dust-of-dawn lights that are in there now, those are, I think those are some antique ones that we had that used to be on Main Street that they repurposed, and they're just, they're getting so bad now, we're gonna put some new ones in and replace those, so the budget, or the cost is $2,300, and the budget amount was $2,300.
Any questions?
That works out. No.
Comments? All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the installation of three poles and lights at the Dire Park in the amount of $2,300. So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, signed by Alderman Schultz. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one absent.
Next is the bullet-resistant glass bid tabs. My recommendation is to go with St. Charles County Glass for the price of $45,103. Budgeted amount was $46,000.
Just a little bit more so, just bring you up to speed. That is the ones in the lobby, as well as down at the place that you, or the sheeting on there.
That's a sign of the times.
Please, unfortunately.
Any questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to award the bullet-resistant glass bid to St. Charles Glass and Glazing in the amount of $45,103, a low bid.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, signed by Alderman Costello. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one absent.
Next is the asbestos bid removal quote from Set Environmental Incorporated for the price of $7,599.96.
What property is on?
Our lighthouse across the street. And that had asbestos on the siding.
Right.
Bathroom floor, first layer, kitchen floor, first and second layer, and the basement steps on the first layer.
What is the use of that property now? What is the use of that property?
That is going to be the new parking lot. Building will be raised, parking lot, and then the structure built for the police cars over them with electric stuff to plug them in for the winter time.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We'll entertain a motion to approve the Set Environmental to remove the asbestos from 204 West Walton in the amount of $7,599.96. So moved.
Second.
Is that John? Is that you?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion was made by Alderman Gary Miller, seconded by Alderman John Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one absent. Now we are on to the bills.
Oh, boys.
I will entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 38-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, signed by Alderman Costello.
In ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement between Agapi Ministries and the City of Warren, Missouri.
Entertaining a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 38-17. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Costello.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Agapi Ministries and the City of Warren, Missouri.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Costello? Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Bill passes five zero with one absent. Entertaining a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 39-17. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Gary Miller.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Warren County Council on Aging and the City of Warren, Missouri.
Entertaining a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 39-17.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Warren County Council on Aging and the City of Warren, Missouri.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Bill passes five zero with one absent. Entertaining a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 40-17. So moved. Second. I'll catch you guys on that one. One, two, and three.
First, second.
Okay. Me, I, Alderman, motion made by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Ock.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between Warren County R-3 School District and the City of Warren, Missouri for school crossing guards.
Entertaining a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 40-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Gary Miller.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between Warren County R-3 School District and the City of Warren, Missouri for school crossing guards.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Bill passes five zero with one absent. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 41-17. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Gary Miller.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement between Warren County R-3 School District and the City of Warren, Missouri for school resource officers.
Entertaining a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 41-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Costello.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement between Warren County R-3 School District and the City of Warren, Missouri for school resource officers.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Bill passes five zero with one absent. Entertaining a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 42-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the Warren County R-3 School District and the City of Warren, Missouri for security services.
Entertaining a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 42-17. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Gary Miller.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the Warren County R-3 School District and the City of Warren, Missouri for security services.
Roll call vote.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Bill passes five zero with one absent.
Can I ask, Council, is there a reason these three can't be rolled together in one bill going forward? Because they're all between the city and the school?
No, I think we've just always done them as separate agreements, and we could authorize them as one ordinance to authorize signing all three agreements.
Can we make note for that next time?
Yeah.
All right, I will entertain a motion for first reading of Bill Number 43-17.
So moved. Second that motion.
Motion made by Alderman John Miller, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance amending the budget of the City of Warren, Missouri for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Entertaining a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 43-17. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Gary Miller, seconded by Alderman Costello.
In ordinance amending the budget of the City of Warren, Missouri for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller? Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Bill passes five zero with one absent. Entertained a motion for the first reading of bill number forty-four dash seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Costello, second by Alden Gary Miller.
In ordinance adapting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on July first, two thousand seventeen, and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number forty-four dash seventeen.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alden John Miller, second by Alden Ock.
In ordinance adapting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning on July first, two thousand seventeen, and appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Bill passes five zero with one absent. Entertained a motion for the first reading of bill number forty-five dash seventeen.
So moved.
Second that motion.
Motion made by Alden John Miller, second by Alden Schultz.
In ordinance accepting the plat of the subdivision known as Highway forty-seven Dollar General Edition by the city of Warren, Missouri.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number forty-five dash seventeen.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alden Costello, second by Alden Gary Miller.
In ordinance accepting the plat of the subdivision known as Highway forty-seven Dollar General Edition by the city of Warren, Missouri.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Bill passes five zero with one absent. Entertained a motion for the first reading of bill number forty-six dash seventeen. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Ock, second by Alden Gary Miller.
In ordinance accepting the plat of the subdivision known as re-subdivision of lot one of Northfield Place by the city of Warren, Missouri.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number forty-six dash seventeen.
So moved.
Excuse me, mayor?
Yes.
Were you going to address the recommendation of the sidewalk issues on that plat?
Did P and Z already say they wanted us, or they gave us the option, put the money in the pot?
They, P and Z recommended that they either paid into the sidewalk fund or install the sidewalk. The plat shows the proposed easement for the sidewalk, but I was just wanting to make sure so I could let the applicant know, is that going to be a requirement or not?
Requirement for either option or just whichever one? I guess not addressing this before, I'm going to rely on council to...
It's going to be one or the other. It's either going to be paying in the sidewalk fund or installing sidewalks.
But we don't have to have it addressed in N E S, right? Because it's already been addressed by P and Z.
Well, but they haven't made a final decision as to, do we want to take the money or do we want them to build sidewalks?
Yeah, the board ultimately has a discretion, as we drafted those ordinance, that ordinance allow back, to make the decision of the financial payment in lieu of installing sidewalks.
Is this lot going to be developed right away, Jack?
It's actually, the two parcels on it are already developed. They're splitting it.
So it's a continuation?
They're splitting it to try to sell the back half, is what they're doing.
How many acres are we talking about sidewalk needed in this project?
How many acres?
Yeah.
It's for the 200-foot strip along the front, along Highway forty-seven.
Did the applicant have a preference, Jack, or communicate a preference, or any comment about either option?
The seller was wanting the buyer to pay for it, and the buyer was wanting the seller to pay for it.
What a shock. Now, is this the building that's the parole office right now currently? And is there any other properties adjoining it that currently have sidewalks?
I believe it is the existing parole office, and no, there's no sidewalks up there along forty-seven. I think that's what we're working on.
Even where the Mormon churches, there's no sidewalks there either. So this would be the only property on that side of the road that would have a sidewalk if we required them to build it, which a first blush would make you think we'd be better off just asking to put the money in the fund.
Strictly up to you guys. I'm just asking for clarification so I give the right answer.
I agree with Alden Ock, doesn't make much sense that one person put a sidewalk in and nobody else around it has it. It'd make more sense than to put a lot.
Could I have an explanation of where is this property located?
North forty-seven.
North of the Mormon church, north on the west side. What's the apartment complexes across the street from it?
Across from indoor.
From indoor state. It's a brick structure.
Okay.
It has multi-businesses, I know it has the parole office down, and what else is involved?
Have we determined what the cost of the...
Yes, it's in the packet. Let me get it out for you.
Okay.
I think the other consideration is, you know, we talk about doing sidewalks on Highway forty-seven. I don't see that being beneficial, and if Highway forty-seven were to be winding to the north, it may require taking out the sidewalk, which they would put in. So, I mean, I think that can also be a case for not wanting to build and simply put money into the fund.
I agree. Anybody else have any defense to that?
No, I agree with the fund.
And in answer to Alderman Gary Miller, as was shown in your package, the cost of the sidewalk, per the recommendation of Guy Givers, Director of Public Works, is $3,485, which would cover 170 feet of sidewalk. It would not include the 30-foot wide existing entrance there.
Okay, thank you.
So, Chris, we need to reread that and have it added to place the money into the fund?
It's not in the title, right, Jack? It's just the approval of it, so...
I don't believe it's shown actually in the ordinance, that's why I was asking how we wanted to address it.
So, we probably need somebody to make a motion to amend the approval to include payment to the sidewalk fund and the dedication to easement, and then we'll write it in later and have you guys sign it, have the mayor sign it later.
So you want us to approve it, then make a motion to...
Well, have we done the first reading?
We've only done first reading.
Okay, so you can make, anybody can make the motion at this time to amend the ordinance to add that, the provision of the donation into the sidewalk fund and the dedication right away, and then you can proceed with the second reading. Or you can do the second reading, do the motion to amend at that time, if that matters.
And the easement is already included on the plat.
Okay, so it's just...
The sidewalk easement.
The donation to the sidewalk fund or payment.
I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion to amend this current bill to include the placement of the funds, or money into the funds for sidewalk development. So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Alden Ock, second by Alden Schultz. Let's do a roll call on that, please.
I want you to read it again first. You got to read it again?
But it's not...
No, it's...
No, this is separate for an amendment.
He'll read the motion, he'll get a vote on the motion to amend, and then do the second reading.
Okay. So what am I doing now?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Gary Miller?
Yes.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
The amendment passes five zero with one absent. Now, I will entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number forty-six dash seventeen to include the amended...
Amendment.
The amendment.
I will make a motion for the second reading.
Second.
Second.
Forty-seven.
I'm sorry.
Forty-seven, dash seventeen.
Forty-six, dash seventeen.
Forty-six, dash seventeen.
Okay.
Motion made by Alden Schultz, second by Alden Costello. Roll call vote. I'm sorry, read it first.
In ordinance accepting plat of subdivision known as re-subdivision of lot one of Northfield Place by the city of Warren, Missouri.
Roll call vote.
Alderman John Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.